Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tolomarts, call the Tuesday, April 29th, City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee. First up is public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period, but before deliberation on tonight's one agenda item. Do we have any members of the public signed up?
Chair Martz, nobody signed up prior to the meeting.
Anyone indicated interest in speaking this evening? All right. I guess I should probably, is there anybody, are there any members of the public online with us?
Chair Martz, there are no members of the public online at this time.
Well, that's disappointing. But I will somehow survive. So we will move on then. Are there any potential, we're going to do minutes slightly differently this evening. Are there any potential changes to the minutes? Seeing none, I move that the minutes are accepted. With that, we will move on to Agenda Item COM 0122, Economic Development Metrics, with Jen Davis Hayes, our economic development manager. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. And I thought I pressed the share button. And thanks for having us here tonight. I wanted to introduce, we have some members of the Economic Vitality Commission here tonight, so I wanted to introduce them first. We have our chair, Chris Richley, and we have our two members, Jennifer. Oh, my gosh. Larson, yes, it was, I was gonna say Mason, that's not it, because I was getting Jake McGill, making sure we don't add a C in his name as an error in the past. So anyway, so they are here to listen to this conversation, and if, you know, there's anything that you want them to add. They're not prepared to speak as far as, you know, for the presentation, but really appreciate their willingness to come out tonight for this. So the purpose here is to review and talk more in depth about the different economic development data and metrics that we collect. So looking at what we collect, why we collect it, what does that data tell us, and then how we use that data to inform our work. There's no policy direction tonight, but we definitely are interested in hearing questions, comments, and ideas of how to improve how we are doing our work, of course. And so the information in the packet has a list of the 28 data points and metrics that we collect. As a two-person economic development team, we collect data from various aspects. So looking at market data around, around commercial retail space, for instance, and looking at unemployment and how people live and work in the city. So some of those, those data points are performance metrics, and some of our data that is, again, part of the marketplace. So I'm going to also talk about the different audiences that we create our data for. So the purposes for that, and then why we do that. So the next few slides, I'm going to walk through examples of that. And again, this is merely with 28 data points. We're not going to go over all of them, but again, have them in the packet if there's any questions. So looking at why and who we collect data for. So our economic dashboard is really intended to showcase Issaquah's climate. And so looking at if a business is interested in learning a quick snapshot about the city of Issaquah, here's one, here's a tool that they could look at any time of day and learn about seeing that our, for instance, our retail sales are increasing, seeing that our vacancy rates are, you know, are at a certain level and the rates are at a certain level. Seeing about our unemployment compared to the region. We have two other dashboards, well, dashboard and metrics that we collect that are more performance-based. So you are very aware of the performance dashboard that City does for the entire strategic plan for the city. And we are part of the social and economic vitality goal area there. And then with our recently adopted Economic Development Action Plan, we have met performance metrics, again, looking at ways that we are making sure that our work plan progresses, but also making sure that the longer-term things that we want to see happen are starting to happen. But that's not all. So we also, as you have seen in the written reports we submit to City Council, we do collect and showcase this sales tax for retail construction and lodging to show about, again, how the broader community climate is compared year over year. And we also collect lodging tax revenues and share with the LTAC at every one of their meetings, which is every two months. So we're constantly looking at data throughout time and using that to, again, inform the work that we do. And then there's various other things, including we have an annual port grant as part of the Economic Development Partnership Program, where we get $1 per capita to invest in economic development items. And for the most part, what we end up reporting there is, for instance, the number of businesses served and marketing reach. And they're slowly trying to get to that more outcome measures. But for right now, so those are, again, some data that we continue to collect and are responsible for reporting out. And the other important piece that we did last year was every four years, we've done a business survey. And so that is the same 13 questions every year since 2012 when we started it, so we can look at the trends. And then we have added in, you know, some new questions. So in 2020, it was very much about what's happening right now with COVID and how are you feeling? We did it in the fall that year because we were a little busy in the spring. But that helped to at least give us a snapshot of where businesses felt they were. And this year, we did have a question about how are things since COVID? And one of the things that you can kind of see here, that, again, there's a lot of information in the packet, but showing that, you know, either, so 63% have either said, you know, they've increased or stable since, over the past three years. So again, you know, imagining during a recovery of COVID. And 16% don't observe a trend, which may or may not mean that they're collecting that data, paying attention to it, or didn't want to share. But it, again, does show that, you know, there are obviously some businesses are decreasing, and they have some unusual fluctuation, which, you know, happens in different industries. The top three challenges this time were, two of them were new, space and lack of advertising. Traffic's always been there. Affordable housing, workforce are the top ones that we typically see. And so for this data, we didn't just say, oh, okay, now we know these answers. What we really do is to follow up with the businesses and say, okay, what did you mean by that? Right? For instance, we had a marketing workshop we did in coordination with the Chamber last year. We had one person sign up for it. So what does that mean? So one of our things was to go back and talk to the businesses who reported that or reported a decrease in sales and learn more information, because we don't want to assume something, create a program, change something if we really don't understand what that's like. So, again, one, another thing that we, we don't just look at the data and say, now we've got it, or we assume that this is good or bad. We really need to understand the pieces behind that. And part of what we learned with the space conversations is, sure, it's a little bit of the lack of space for retail and some commercial uses, but it's also price. It's also about the type of space. So some businesses need more flex space than is available here. And/or we've had some creative businesses that just, that, you know, they don't really need a retail frontage, but they need some larger space. And that really, and the willingness for a property owner to rent to them to create the work they do, which is, you know, varied among property owners. So, and then more, more often, we started doing, so a business retention, expansion and retention visit is when we go out and talk to business proactively. You know, how is your business doing? What, what kind of things can we help you with? And so I started doing a survey after the fact to say, hey, did, you know, our staff, how did that work? Is there, did you get what you needed? Were we respectful, all those kinds of things? So we're just kind of, we just started that, and then I'm the only staff right now, so we don't have too much of that data to show. But we'll continue to kind of, again, look at data from many different angles, because if we're providing a service, if we have a program and it's not working, we rather know that than just kind of walking through our day thinking everything is fine. So the, again, looking at one piece of data per each of the things. I took the commercial vacancy data point for the dashboard. And so, again, you know, wanting to make sure we understand the commercial trends. One of the things that we realize is that as, as we look at data, sometimes we already know, we've known, because, for instance, we knew as early as 2023, early 2023, or maybe before, that Microsoft was going to be vacating those buildings. So we knew there was going to be a large vacancy rate coming for that. But, so, again, this data is collected to can, you know, make sure we understand or to be aware of the quarterly changes. And so minus the, you know, knowing that there are two large, you know, buildings that are currently, have become vacant at the end of 2023, because as I look at the information, there, these buildings are 12% of the total Issaquah office market, right? And then 75% of the current vacancy. So that's not to say we don't want to work to get those filled, but it doesn't paint, it paints a picture of it much more drastic as far as our vacancy. Yes?
Yeah, I actually want to, I look at this, and I have two questions associated with this. The first question is, we had an almost as dramatic as that increase in office vacancy. We had a drop in industrial inflex vacancy in 2024. And we went from something like 8% to, like, almost zero. And we've come back up to like 1.3%. Do you know what that is? I mean, literally, to go from like, you know, 8% to under, under 1%.
Yeah.
Do we know what that?
Yeah, so we don't have a lot of flex space, as I mentioned before. So the Cascade Business Park is the most of that. And they went through a new ownership to, well, I'm not sure, it was during COVID when they purchased it, but they started doing facade improvement, they started changing tenants out. So I think that, because when we went, gosh, Pharrell, Juliana, and I did a business walk of that center, we could tell there were things moving, people were saying things are changing. So I think there was a little bit of re-tenanting happening there. Yeah, and again, we don't have industrial quote-unquote "space," which would be in that as well, but that's, that's.
There is some industrial space, right? Because Marketing Masters just left the city, and they had industrial space.
Yes, yeah, and that may also be, that may be classified, I should be looking at my audience here, as also office, because there's office space in there. But yes, that is, and then some of our, our buildings over by Public Works, that's in our, in our commercial intensive zone, which, you know, quote-unquote, is our more industrial space. So there's, you know, window installers and, you know, Minutemen press and that kind of thing that are over there. So those are smaller homes, and again, not as much square footage.
And then the second question is, with both industrial inflex and retail being under 2%, I mean, is there a percentage where you say, like, our problem isn't that we have too much vacancy, it's that we have too little vacancy?
Yeah.
And that it becomes a strategic question for the city? Because I, those numbers scare me on the low side.
Yeah, agreed, agreed, because, you know, it's sad to say, like, oh, when businesses close, that's good, because there's now opportunity for somebody else to come back in.
Right, of course, we wouldn't say that.
No, we don't say that. But what, we actually, with Economic Vitality Commission, we have a subcommittee that we're working with the Planning Policy Commission, looking at commercial retail, I'm sorry, commercial space retention. Because the reality for a while was that every commercial space, that building lot that came, property that came up for sale was being purchased to be redeveloped for multifamily. Now it's a little bit more townhomes. And we want to make sure that we need, we def, this is, they're talking about central Issaquah. So we definitely need more housing in that area, but we also need to make sure that we have space for future jobs, future, you know, services for our community. So unfortunately, many communities aren't building retail, you know, new retail because of just the way it is. So we are looking at it as, as we move forward. Again, we don't have any recommendations or even inklings of where we'll be, but, you know, do we require it? Do we incentivize it? Do we just encourage it? And so we'll be back to council probably next year with some recommendations to kind of look at that. But making sure we don't lose that opportunity too soon, or too, it's too late.
Well, and, you know, part of it gets at the goals that we have as a city, right? And our strategic plan as a city. I love our friends to the north, Samamish. They have a different view towards businesses, you know, all sorts of, you know, commercial and retail space, right?
Yeah.
But we're, we're a different city.
Yes.
And we view ourselves differently. And this concern, this concerns me greatly. I, you know, it's, it's like unemployment rates. It can be too high, or it can be too low.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Chris, you look like you have a question.
I do, and since you dove into this chart, I will dive in along with you. Not all retail, I think, is created equal. Do we know, can we subdivide that, that blue bar into what its components are? Because there's a lot of difference between a, I don't know, a 10,000-square-foot, you know.
Big box, kind of.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and Office Depot, or Home Depot, or, I guess Office Depot's gone. But, yeah, so, so there's, and then I, you know, when I superimpose on that the thing that I heard from your survey, that space is the biggest concern, that, that makes me kind of, you know, perk up, sort of like Councilmember Martz perked up. So, anyway, it would be interesting if we could, if you had any data on how that, how that breaks down and how the vacancies break down by relative size.
I'll look into that. I'm not, I'm not sure. I think we, we do, we can get that data, you know, within the long list. I mean, right now, just knowing, we don't have any big-box openings. And I've worked here long enough where we had, where Hobby Lobby is, where Lazy Boy, and where Town and Country Market was, right? So, but right now, we don't.
And Barnes &amp; Noble.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and Barnes &amp; Noble, there you go. So Ross, let me take that back. So Ross is currently vacant in the Commons, but they have, they're negotiating with businesses. And so, what's that? Or tails, and they're also negotiating, thank you, with, with a potential user. So until they sign that, I can't really say that out loud to who it is. But, sure, sure, there is some larger spaces. But I will see if I can do that.
I think that would be really interesting, too, and maybe something that will help inform, maybe off-topic, but also help inform PDE in looking at, or planning policy in looking at land use. Because if we're finding, like, lots of vacancy in a certain size range, then we want to kind of discourage that while encouraging something else. So we'll come back to that at the end.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and I think, as you know, a lot of people are, again, looking at retail and the changes with, you know, online, as been talked about for a decade now. And so I think that's, again, that's one of the reasons why retail, when it is built, it's going to be limited in scale unless they have a grocery store that's going to be in there or something else that's able to, you know, be ready to move in. So, not speculative. Any more questions on this? Okay. And then did I make sure I didn't skip? All right, I did go to one too many. So then, looking at, oh, and I guess, you know, for, so for the, I just want to step back for a second. So, because I did mention this, that, but it's on the slide here about. So for the office buildings, we've done a lot with the 90 East slash Park is what they're called now. We toured our Greater Seattle Partners staff in 2023, actually, before they were even officially on the market. We met with the owners to talk about, you know, what they were looking at. And they were actually just recently looking at a lease for a business that's in town and making sure that they're, you know, they were getting the right information slash all the information they needed in order to make, to do the tenant improvements to potentially have this business move in. So we're really making, we're really connected with the broker. And they, they have, so they know that it's going to be a while before they, so it may come and lease 175,000 feet from them. They are leasing per floor, but they do have, besides recently painting the buildings, they have a really robust tenant improvement package that they're ready to activate as soon as they have a large tenant sign in. So that includes some improvements to the cafeteria, adding some amenities, you know, bikes and kayaks and that kind of stuff. So, so, you know, while you may see this and think, oh, you know, what's happening there, there's, there are some wait-and-see kind of things, but they did invest in some ways to be ready for when the market changes. And that's, I think, really important. Oh, I opened the Pandora's box, go ahead.
That is really interesting. Does our, does our office number include the recently opened Costco facility?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was, that was a whole truckload of office space coming online at something near 100% occupancy.
Right, right, yeah, I think it's, it is 100% occupancy. So, yeah, it wouldn't have changed the percentage of vacancy.
Yeah, but it would have increased the denominator?
And the numerator.
Yeah, I mean, it would have shown us to be more full than before that information came online.
Yeah.
So it would jog the vacancy rate down.
Yeah, and it's not up. So, anyway, just interesting.
Good point. Okay. And then the performance dashboard, again, you've had multiple presentations about this, but one of the things that we do look at for economic development is jobs. And so I actually was just talking to the Employment Security Department economist today to get the latest numbers for '24, which aren't available till September. But basically, you know, we look at this, making sure that while we're talking to businesses every day and we're, you know, talking to the larger businesses and hear about, you know, employment growth or we're having to cut back because of a lot of restaurants or other service businesses now are making choices to cut hours because of costs, rising costs, right? So, well, we hear that every day, you know, actually looking at it and the trend is important in making sure we're moving in the right direction, because as we grow as a community, we want to grow with our jobs. So, you know, if, again, what we've heard, what we hear on a more regular basis, that, you know, there's problems finding employees, or for smaller businesses, you know, can't afford to hire more people on. And so we'll, you know, work with them to see if there's some, you know, options, working with some nonprofits in the area as far as alternate, you know, workforce, going to job, you know, letting them know about job fairs they may not be aware of. For the most part, you see the dip for '21, again, COVID, and then it slowly got up, moved up. And the '22 to '23, I think there was a little bit of an adjustment after people who kind of held on for a while during COVID then kind of made some adjustments to either their workforce and/or decisions to be in business for themselves. So hoping, what I'm asking for now from Employment Security Division is the latest that they have for '24 as far as without, I think it's through third quarter, and it's preliminary, but just to kind of see where that goes there. But we anticipate with the growth that we've heard from some of our larger employers that this will, may, you know, eke up a bit.
So one of the things that I like about the performance dashboard is that most of the metrics have essentially a red, yellow, or green associated with them, right? This one doesn't. This one, just in the area where it would be red, yellow, or green, it's just, it says blank. It's similar to percentage of people who both live and work in Issaquah, also blank. So is this about these sort of red, yellow, and greens? Do we want to have, are we going to get to a point where we'll have a red, yellow, or green on this? And what do we do with our reds? Because I feel like, and I'm neither council president nor mayor, but it seems like at some point, we should say a, here's our reds, and here's what we're doing about our reds.
So I think there's a snafu in the backend of this performance dashboard, which I don't work, I don't work at, I think, because we don't have 2024 numbers, that's why it's blank. And so actually, I have a meeting with Dale Marky Crimp on Friday to talk about this and to talk about the fact that we, so we have two, so the live, live and work in Issaquah is available in May, but that's from the federal government, and I'm hoping we get that in May, right? So what if we don't, right? You know, we will get that as soon as we will share. So we should.
And that's fine.
Yeah, so we should, we should, you know, fix that so it's not just blank, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying estimated time of arrival, maybe 2025.
Yes, and both of these are, yeah, are later on. So we're going to talk about that. But I think it is an automatic thing that for our two, these are the two that, the two that you mentioned that don't have, aren't completed, quote-unquote, by, by end of March, I guess, is when.
But this whole red, yellow, green thing, it's like when you do annual performance reviews.
Yeah.
You met expectations.
Yep.
Met most expectations, did not meet expectations. So we have some did-not-meet expectations in this, in this dashboard. So the question is, you know, how does that, you know, how does, what does that come back as, right? Like, it's great to look at all the data, it's great to have it at our fingertips. But once something's, you know, once the red ink comes out, then what does it mean to have the red ink come out?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, again, part of it is looking at it and trying to figure out why. So, for instance, we just had, so a lot of businesses are having trouble finding job, or certain employees right now. And so the hospitality industry is one that's often struggled. We just had a conversation with the Workforce Development Council's Sound Jobs, where they're actually supporting hospitality industry with $20,000 worth of services to help them create a culture and a workplace where people want to stay and grow. So there's things like that that we are, you know, actively letting folks know about.
Isn't the issue that 3 million jobs have gone from hospitality to transportation and logistics as the retail delivery, basically?
They're Amazon drivers now, is that, yeah, delivery drivers?
My understanding of the magnitude is 3 million jobs have gone from hospitality to transportation.
And there's changes in immigration, and there's changes in, yeah, birth rates, yeah, so lots of things. So, so what can we do as a tiny city with very little resources to work with our regional partners who have investments in the workforce system, finding ways, we coordinated with our eastside cities during COVID to try to get an economic development administration grant. So anything we can do in that way, but, yeah, so I'm, yeah. Individually, we're probably not going to change that trend, but what can we do to help those businesses, again, improve the workplace environment for people? So maybe when they are interested in not doing that anymore, they have a place that they can go back to, and it's.
Or getting more of those transportation and logistics jobs.
Sure.
Could be part of it.
Distrib, yeah, distribution stuff. Definitely, okay. Yeah, so again, we, you know, we work regularly with our businesses. We meet at least once or twice with our larger businesses per year and actually, you know, focused on what's going on, but also have multiple conversations throughout the year. So, again, these are metrics, performance metrics that we collect. And then another thing that's a new metric that we collect for the Economic Development Action Plan is new business licenses. And so, again, we want to make sure that some of the efforts that we've been saying, hey, we're doing all these startup classes, you know, how to start your business. So it's one measure of a business climate that people feel like they can take that next step to actually get a business license. They may have a dream, they may talk about it, but do they have the resources and the, and the information to move forward? We, for instance, start, created a book last year, How to Do Business in Issaquah, so it gives them some ideas of, you know, what they need to do. So this is the first year we collected it, so we'll be able to see trends in the future. But one of the things, just so you know, things that we do for new businesses, so we send them a welcome letter, say, hey, we're here. It actually has not only economic development, it also has community planning and developments contact to say, if you need a permit, please call us. We make sure they're on our business e-news, which has resources about, you know, whether it's technical assistance or things happening in the city and promote, and ability to kind of promote through that. And then we, we also have, as part of our BRE, Business Retention and Expansion Program, we make sure that we include some new businesses and find out, you know, why did you open Issaquah, and, you know, what, what made you decide to be here? And a lot of times, people say they've been looking for a long time if they're going into retail space. And so it's really interesting to kind of hear that information. Just last week, I met with a couple who want to open a Mexican bakery. And, yeah, it was, they gave a little sample, it was really good. So, but, anybody? So, but, anybody know an empty bakery in Issaquah, right? And so, you know, working with them to try to do some steps beforehand. So, thinking about pop-up opportunities, thinking about other ways for them to gain that experience, brand awareness, and test out their products. So, it's not just going from, I have an idea today to opening up a storefront. So, we're working on things like that.
I think Deputy Council President Demichel has a question.
Oh, just, I know that we have a lot of home-based businesses in Issaquah, so do we, do we track?
Yes.
How many of those, 598, which seems like a really nice, nice number, are just people who are setting up a business in their garage or their kitchen table or whatever?
Yeah, we can split that out. And, and so, the one thing I will say is that the business license database, so people apply through the Department of Revenue and then add us on as a city endorsement. It's, it's a little challenging because sometimes there's businesses that already are open and have a quote unquote new business license, that it's self-selecting for, are you a home-based business, yes or no? So, we can, so we, we do, you know, we do our best to clean the data, but we don't know every business that's already in the city. So, we've kind of, you know, established a, here's what it is. So, we can definitely look at the yes, nos for the home-based businesses and, no, it may be a little off, but my guess is it's going to be a large percentage of the 598. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm, in sleuthing through these, you, you have a nice page in the report that's got four columns. It's got the metric, it's got economic development dashboard, action plan quarterly report, citywide performance dashboard. So, the economic development dashboard stuff is, is beautiful and easy to see. The citywide performance metric stuff is beautiful, easy to see. Action plan quarterly report. So, you were just talking about new and active business licenses, which is in the action plan quarterly report column. And I go to that link, and that is the economic development action.
Right, yeah. We haven't set up a reporting, is that what you're going to?
Yeah, where do I find that? If I said, boy, I want to see how we've been doing with new business licenses over the last several years. That's not, that's not there.
It's not there yet, no.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, I'm not losing my mind.
No, you aren't, you aren't.
The other two columns, all that data, it's beautiful, and you've got multi-year, and it's all the stuff my nerdy engineer brain wants. But that, that column is still, is in work.
Yes, and our, our data person moved to Dallas in August last year. So, he, so, but we, you know, and this is part of working with Economic Vitality Commission, and we, you know, have kind of paused, you know, slowed down the ability to kind of, you know, make pretty displays of it, but we are collecting it, and we'll, and definitely we'll get better on it moving forward.
And it all really comes back to what do we need to worry about and what don't we need to worry about? Like, some of it is, yes, we compile the data, and, and it's, and it's great that you talk about that process, but, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's where is we as a city, you know, we know we need to focus on public safety, we know we need to focus on social services, right? You know, where else do we not know that we need to spend more time and effort on? And so, that's why, when I see that, it's not to, you know, yell at anybody, but just because I'm hungry to see that information.
Me too.
Gotcha.
Yeah, no, so it's, it's in the works, and we, and in our, the next steps, I'll kind of talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, again, like you said, you know, you can collect data for data's sake, but really, you know, how do we use it? So, when we get data, we look at it, but we don't just look at it and say, oh, this must be the reason we're going to go and create a new program or change things. So, we really go out and talk to businesses to try to understand what that really means. We come to the Economic Vitality Commission, we have that discussion, right? Then we figure out what, what's a good response, and then, you know, kind of like any good strategic plan or action, you're, you know, you're making sure that you follow up and find out, did that really meet your needs? And then, you know, modifying, kind of go from there. So, you know, overall, the, the data that we see as a big picture for the city of Issaquah, we're, you know, again, I've been working in economic development for 25 years in municipalities, and, you know, we have a really strong business climate and economic vitality here. Doesn't mean there aren't things that we can improve on, and aren't things that we should be aware, aren't coming down the pike. But because of our work daily with, you know, property owners, business owners, developers, brokers, you know, we, we start to hear kind of some things, and we are able to suggest and remind people of what's really important for the community. But, you know, our commercial space, as you mentioned, retail space is really limited. I think there's going to be some, you know, our office vacancy isn't as bad as other areas, again, you know, it can be improved, and we are, one of the things I started at the beginning of this year but have put on pause is to contact those property owners who do have vacant space about pop-ups. And so, maybe one of the office spaces that's nearby and arterial could do some pop-up, you know, events. Doesn't have to be, you know, full, full blast retail, but it could be some things like that. And the, the thing that has really changed, and I, City Minister Bob Krybich has said this for the last, I don't know, four or five years, is that we now have a lot more people living and working in the city. So, I looked up that data for 2023, and '24 is not available, and it's about 50%, where it was about 30% in 2022 and before that. And so, a lot of that, I think, is, I'm working virtually and I may not be here full-time, but that, that shows that we have a bigger, you know, audience, bigger number of people to potentially go out to eat, to potentially run some more errands here versus wherever they worked.
So, let me make sure I understand that right, because I have been saying for 20 years that the people that work here can't live here, and the people who live here can't work here. But what you're telling me is that's changing, that that used to be 70%, and it's now down to 50%. That's great. That is, that is a, that is a very strategic number.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that.
Some of it may be some partially work from home, and I, I'm moving into a job that allows partial work from home, having been in a job that was 100% being in the office. So, you know, I understand we have to be careful, but at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. That shows, yeah, that, we're moving in the, in the right direction, so.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, that was, again, I just looked at that today and, and updated the dashboard, so it'll, it'll be refreshed on Friday, probably. Any questions then, before I go to the next steps?
Nope.
Okay. Come on, slide. All right. So, we started a customer resource management tool in the fall of 2024. So, we're still in the midst of, we, I am still in the midst of cleaning up data that has been imported from many, many spreadsheets. But what's exciting about this is that we're going to have a much better and easier way to track and report all types of actions. New businesses, how many BREs, how many women-owned businesses do we serve? And so, I'm looking forward to that in the next few months, to be able to start to report that out, again, in a way that truly reflects all the work we do, because a lot of times, you know, you're not always writing down exactly those three things you did for a business, but this has helped to make it more systematic. We're going to have more, we're going to have some trends for the Economic Development Action Plan. Again, we have one year, and so, looking at probably early this fall, talking to the Economic Vitality Commission, looking at that, seeing, okay, what progress so far? What things do we need to adjust? Has something changed completely, you know, in our, in our community and/or the, the business environment? And then, one of the things, again, that our data guy was working on, was really creating more data on the website for, focus on, you know, people who want to know about our business, so our community. So, business recruitment is kind of the words we use, but, but also for businesses that are currently here and want to, are thinking about expanding what they do. And so, you know, some of this information that's typically on economic development websites, you know, and we've had and have old data on marketing brochures that I made back in 2015, include, you know, household income, number of households, average age, you know, the industry sector data, public safety, education levels of residents. So, all this will be easily found on our webpage under YIS Aquah or other areas. And a little, a little, little snippet, the person that we're going to be starting as our economic development coordinator in May has a strong data background. So, so I'm like, it's going to happen. So, once you have somebody who really knows what they're doing and has that, you know, focus and, and ability to kind of create those, those stories and the, the data that's, that makes sense to show, right? Again, not just data for data's sake. So, that's what we will be having coming up in, in the next few months, and, again, really excited to have some systems in place where it doesn't have to be looking through your email and calendar every time you think about what, what have we done? So, any questions?
No. Questions?
So, you know, talking about employee retention, because we know that housing's expensive here, commute times are horrendous, the Issaquah-Hobart Road is a horrible way to get into Issaquah, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, what are we really seeing working? You talked about going out and helping people get, produce a different environment. What do we see that is really working in terms of increasing retention and making people want to come here to work even though we do have some significant barriers? So, just, just your overall thoughts about that.
Yeah, so I think, so if you're talking about employees versus business owners, I think that, I think it's the, the cult, the climate of your workplace means a lot, right? And so, I think we have a lot of business owners who are, you know, have, have started their businesses a passion, have gotten good at it, and are creating, you know, they want, they know they need to keep employees happy in order to keep them, because, again, ups and downs we've had over the past few years, you know, you know, if you've got a good employee, you're going to do whatever you can to keep them. There's, and I don't know, this is hard to know, how many of those business owners, you know, are taking advantage of some of these classes slash resources slash, hey, they're at the business fair that the Washington State does every year, there's a workshop about this or that. The Chamber has done the business summit in the past, and they, you know, sometimes talk about that. And so, I think the Sound Jobs Program is going to be really interesting because they're collecting data to be able to, again, see if this makes, if this is working across the region. So, kind of having a better idea of what things did work, of investing in employers to create and what things didn't, I think will be something that we, that we can take and, and move on to others. So, I think, yeah, it's, it's really hard to tell. But, again, I think some of those job fairs and making those connections with the colleges where they can find other, other employees has helped, whether they stay and that's, you know, internal a thing that is important.
Yeah, and that's the reason it's really hard to track these things, because it's a complex set of, of things that people make their decisions, base their decisions on, about whether to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's unpredictable almost, but, you know, but on the other hand, we do know that there are some things that people consistently talk about, the commute, the cost of living, et cetera, yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I don't know if ESD, Employment Security Department, collects retention numbers, because like, a job's a job, right? And so, if I have it and then somebody else has it, it's still one versus, yeah. So, I'll, since I'm in communication with them just this week, I'll ask about that.
And that, it concludes your presentation to us this evening?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I will ask our clerk's office if there's any members of the public now online.
Unfortunately, there are not. Chair Martz.
Disappointing, okay. Well, we don't have a deliberation phase because we're not, we certainly do have a comment. I was going to say, though we don't have deliberation, we could certainly editorialize at this point. Or editorialize is a loaded term. Comment, yes. Councilmember eight, you look like you would like to comment.
I would really love to comment, and Jen, thanks for the presentation. It was super, super fun, super interesting, so much potential. I have two thoughts that I want to share. One is something that might be useful, and the other is my hobby horse. And I'll start with my hobby horse, which is, we have to build more retail. We cannot let builders come in and put in nothing but residential without putting in corresponding retail. And I've been, I've been kind of beating that drum for some time, but now I look at the survey that says our biggest problem is we don't have space, and then I look at the cost of commercial rent in Issaquah, and retail is significantly higher now than office space. And so, it's telling me a pretty interesting tale that my confirmation bias is being confirmed. So, but anyway, seriously, though, we have to do that. And, and so, in your conversations with PPC, as we start to work through any code changes, we have to make it so that if we're putting in residential, we have to put in more retail. My second thought I'd like to share, which I think you align to, which is better data results in better outcomes. I'm super psyched about your CRM. I happen to be working on a CRM myself right now, and so I would like to share one observation, which is CRMs are most effective when you have a network effect. The more people use it, the better the data, and the richer and better the outcomes you get from that data. So, if you could get any, everybody who is public-facing within the city of Issaquah to embrace that CRM and to add information to it, all of a sudden, it becomes more valuable to you from economic development, but also more valuable to them being at PDE or, planning, community planning?
Planning development.
No.
Community planning.
Community planning and development, thank you. I was really binding up on that one. And also, a couple of thoughts on dashboards, another interest of mine of late. There are kind of two kinds of dashboards. One, I think, are what I would call the check engine light. That's where it turns red because it falls off the table and you go, something is out of alignment and we need to react quickly. But the other one, the more interesting ones, are the ones where we actually bring together data from various sources, and we look for trends, and we look, and we recognize that our economic conditions are always changing and that we need to have metrics that help us be proactive and get ahead of those coming waves, so that, to use the hockey analogy, that we're shooting our economic development puck to where the economy is going to be in the future, not to where it is today. So, I think we've got a solid, solid foundation and just a couple of things where I think we could maybe tweak it a little bit and really take it to the next level. But thanks, thanks for all the work that you guys are doing. I think this is super important.
Deputy Council President?
I, I think that, I don't have a lot to say. I love the data that you're collecting and, and the fact that we're following so many of these important trends. I think I've expressed my concern about, you know, the, it, I hear all the time from folks that it's really hard to recruit people and retain people, and that seems to be one of the major things that we need to focus on. It's hard to know, again, what's the solution there? We want to increase our transportation. We want to, we want to do all of the, everything is a very expensive, very expensive proposition for changing the environment here, and yet, Issaquah is a wonderful place to come to work. So, so, well, we just keep watching what's going on, and like Councilmember Martz said, where are the red flags that we really need to worry about and that maybe we can do something about? So, I appreciate the presentation. I did want to ask the visitors if any of them would care to comment as well. I'd love to hear from them, if, if you're willing to, to spend some time with us.
And if you'd like to identify yourself and your role on the commission.
Good evening. Chris Richly, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Chris Richly, Economic Vitality Commission Chair, also Issaquah resident up in the Issaquah Highlands for 11 years now this year. And first, I want to start by thanking Jen Davis Hayes for all the work that she's done. I've been working with Jen now, going on five years now, so it's been tremendous working with her, and I thank the Council for, and the city for passing to allow her to keep another staff member, because I know it's, it's honestly a three-member staff that could be helpful, but two is better than one, to be honest. And the, and the city to take economic vitality as an initiative to really continue to grow the, the city in a, in a sense of business is supported, it's shown by the passing of the recent economic development plan last year by Council, so thank you again for that. Thank the 12 commissioners, and that, you know, I want to also thank them for their time and service, because it is a volunteer position, right? So, with that said, and we do hear Council, and we do appreciate Council's feedback tremendously on, on the economic development plan, we have the same questions, I could tell you that as a commission. We have the same questions around recruitment. What could we do better to ask, you know, businesses and partner with businesses in the Chamber, you know, is, is one of those, those partners that we very much look for support? Me as a chair and my, and my vice chair now, we look at the Me as a chair, and my, and my vice chair now, we look at the recruitment of our commissioners to mirror a lot of the businesses within the community, so we get a voice from every one of those businesses in the community. We've done that, through the best of our abilities. We've had the most applicants over the last two now years, out of all the commissions and boards. So economic vitality is very much on the minds of a lot of residents and community members to say that. So, the concern around recruitment, yes, looking at the different businesses that we can, it's also about that environment that the businesses do recreate, because I do believe that there are a lot of good businesses that people want to work in Issaquah. But again, that challenge of living in Issaquah is very challenging because of the fact of the rent, which we cannot control. But if the central Issaquah plan does take off, there would be, you know, maybe mixed use, to a sense, to where there's retail on the bottom, retail on the back, it doesn't matter where, it could be around the top of the building at this point, but retail mixed use with affordable workforce housing. And that's been brought up a lot. So, know that it's been talked about in the EVC. We always welcome Council and the mayor and the city's recommendations as far as that. To be honest, we would like some more feedback. If you have something that's of a concern, don't hesitate to reach out to Jen for the Economic Vitality Commission, myself. You know, you know where I'm at, I'm here. So, I mean, at that point, it really shows that the city does care about the vitality and the economic growth of the, of the city for that. So with that, I thank you all for that, and any questions I can answer for you as well.
No, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you, guys.
It's a talk fund, cool. Jake McGill here, Commissioner on Economic Vitality. Chris is a hard act to follow, but I just wanted to echo his sentiment of what he said. We're eager and hungry here on Economic Vitality Commission to really help you all out. If you have any policy changes or code updates you all are doing, I just want to encourage you all to send that our way if you want the opinion of the business community. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Larson, and I'm on the Economic Vitality Commission, and I also have the pleasure of working with Sandmar as their Chief People Officer. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. It's been wonderful to hear all the information shared. I have been on the commission now for a few years, and I want to also thank Jen for the work that she has done to bring, to bring both our commission forward as well as to provide great information to the city. It's fascinating to be on the commission and to see the amount of information that's collected, and it's collected in the right ways. It's not just a survey, it's not just seeing people, it's not just what's provided by the government, but it's really putting the whole package together that makes a difference, because we're in it for the long game, and it's really hard to find some of the measurable things, like, you know, what's happening and how we're moving it. So we want to be sure that we're moving the city in the right direction. And then I couldn't help adding one thing, I'll be fascinated to see what the data looks like a year from now, relative to retention. Because as Jen said, there are things that we can help businesses do to create a culture and a climate, so that people want to stay and work there. But there are also things that are, that create sort of the external environment. And one of the things, as, as a local employer, and we have 450 who work in the office building here, is that with changes in the economic climate, retention changes dramatically. So the difference, for example, if you had asked me how we're staffing Sandmar two years ago, I would have been concerned about retention. If you ask me right now, I have more candidates than we've ever had before, and last year our turnover was the lowest it had been in a long time. So I think it's just sort of looking at all the trends, both what's happening in the city, what's happening globally as well, or kind of around the state as well. So, thank you for having us here, and I appreciate your feedback and your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Deputy Counsel President?
Oh, I was just going to say that I'm so glad to hear from all of you, and I appreciate the time that you put in, and I know we all do, so thank you, and I appreciate the dialogue back and forth, so thank you so much.
And do you have any other comment? Do not, okay. I have a couple. I want to absolutely plus-one what Councilmember Ray said about retail. You know, when I think about retail, I think about, there's a very famous scene, I won't describe it too much, but it's in the movie When Harry Met Sally, and the punchline in it is that where, I think it's Rob Reiner's mother is playing a patron there, and she says, I'll have what she's having. I want what Bothell and Woodinville have. They have created a ton of four-over-one and five-over-one development in their, in their downtowns. And we got told, we've been told for a decade that we can't do it here for some reasons that I've never understood, but they've done it, and they're not that different from us. So, I couldn't agree with you more, Councilmember Ray. And we just get more and more data that says that we need more retail, and, you know, maybe it's Council just saying, we're not going to let people build if they don't do four-over-one or five-over-one. I mean, I don't know what it looks like, but that's, you know, that's something that I would love to have economic development help us. Like, how do we, how do we be like Bothell and Woodinville? They've done it, right? They have so much development downtown, and it's been done beautifully. It's been done like all the pictures that we've had of the central area, that, all the pretty pictures that we've had made for the last 15 years, they've actually gone and done it. So whatever you can do to help us create that future where there's, where there's more retail. And then the other thing I'll mention, and this is really around metrics and, and control systems. So engineers talk about open-loop control and closed-loop control. Open-loop control is, you're in your car, you're driving down the road, you look, you decide, I care about my, my speedometer. And you look down, you go, oh, that's interesting, I'm only doing 45 miles an hour. Maybe it's because I'm going uphill, I don't know. And then the next time you look, you're like, oh, hey, I'm doing 75 miles an hour in a 60 mile-an-hour zone. That's interesting. So, that's an open-loop system, right? Closed-loop system is, I'm going to, I'm going to have a thing that I control, and that's going to be the accelerator pedal, right? And I'm going to look at the steering, I'm going to look at my speedometer, and if I'm over the speed limit, I'm going to take my foot, I'm going to start lifting my foot off the gas, and if I'm below the speed limit, I'm going to put my foot on the gas more. But it's identifying what are the levers of control that I have that can respond from my metrics, right? And so, you know, one of the ancillary questions I asked earlier about things that are red flags, right? So the question is, what is the equivalent of the accelerator pedal on those red flags, right? And how do we move from, you know, you always have, you start with open-loop, you start with, like, what are the things I'm going to measure? And I think you're doing, and I think the city is doing a good job, and I think tonight you've really highlighted how much data we are, we are using. The challenge is now to go from open-loop to closed-loop, and what are the accelerator pedals for each of these things? And some of those accelerator pedals are things on the administration side, and some of those things are policy and large fiscal questions for Council. So, that's my feedback. Any other closing thoughts? I want to thank again the members of the commission for being here this evening, that was awesome support for this. Jen, thank you so much for coming back with this information. I think it gives us a much better picture, and I'm going to, I'm going to heartily encourage the other four councilmembers to watch the video from tonight. Not that I don't always, of course, but in particular this evening. So with that, is there, I think we're done with this action item, so any good of the order from my fellow members? Not from me either. So with that, at 7:28 PM, we are adjourned. Thank you, throngs of viewers at home.